I'm calling this regular session of the town council of Courtside to order at 7:00 PM, Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014. Pastor, would you give the invocation? Father, we come to you tonight to do the business of the town of Courtside. God, I pray that you would help the council do the business of the town. Lord, I pray that you would bless the town of Courtside and bless the United States of America in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please call the robe.
Mayor Foster.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Cricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ogeron.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Timberlake.
Here.
I have a motion on the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Move to second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, presentations and proclamations. We have a proclamation for mental health awareness week, October 5th through 11th, 2014. Whereas mental health is essential to health, every individual, family, and community must understand that mental health is an essential part of overall health, and we must increase suicide prevention by reducing the stigma of seeking care. And whereas it is essential to eliminate disparities in mental health by promoting well-being for all regardless of race, ethnicity, language, place of residence, or age, and ensure equality of access, delivery of service, and improvement of outcome through public and private partnerships to ensure culturally competent care to all. And whereas consumers and families must have the necessary information and the opportunity to exercise choice over their care decisions, including individualized plans of care, expanded support to employment, enhanced rights protections, better criminal and juvenile justice divergence, and reentry programs, improving access to housing and end chaotic homelessness and... Whereas every individual must have the opportunity for early and appropriate mental health screening, assessment, and referral to treatment. And whereas adults and children with mental illness must have ready access to evidence-based best treatment services and support leading to recovery. And whereas the mental health system must inform consumers, providers, and public policy with quality, accessible, and accountable information, supporting the improved care and information dissemination. Now therefore be resolved that we, the town council of Courtside, Arizona, does hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th, 2014, as Mental Illness Awareness Week in the town of Courtside, Arizona, to increase public awareness of mental illness and in so doing to promote greater access to effective treatment for those who suffer from the potentially disabling symptoms of these disorders. Ed Foster, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, one tiny correction. It's chronic homelessness, not chaotic homelessness.
Thank you. I stand corrected.
It was quite a mouthful anyway, huh?
Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda presented.
Second.
Move to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Next is administrative items. We have a guest presentation by Paul Skillicorn, CEO of Biotechnology Research and Development, LLC, and Daniel P. B. Higgins, PE, Regional Director of Centro US DE Power and Water and Process Technologies, will provide information regarding agroaquatics and alternate waste treatment solutions. Mr. Skillicorn? You'll step forward to the mic and introduce yourselves to the people.
I'm Paul Skillicorn. I'm the president of Biotechnology Research and Development and Agroaquatics, two companies that will be hopefully involved in working with you guys in the future. This is Leila Garza, who heads up, was the present CEO of Alma Energy, who is the US rights holder to the technologies we're going to be talking about today. And Dan Higgins, who heads up GE Sales Marketing for the US NR product. So with that, let me start.
Welcome, welcome to our council meeting. You may proceed.
It's a pleasure. Yeah, okay, so I'll just indicate as we go along. We have a simple proposal that we'd like to make to the town of Courtside, and it is essentially to take your existing wastewater treatment system and replace it with a system that we will demonstrate in the following slides. Your existing system in Courtside is a good system. It's working well right now. It takes raw influent, it removes grit, and it screens for floating solids. It then goes through a hydraulic balancing in a flow equalization, which is a small tank essentially. From there, it goes into a sequencing batch reactor, which is a sequence process that produces bacteria, thickens the bacterial sludge that's being produced, and then clarifies that and discharges water into a disinfection process before disposing it into the nearby wash. It's a system that works, it costs money, but it works. We could go to the next slide. Just to look at what your system does as a net result. It treats wastewater successfully, it's working. It takes the nutrients in the wastewater and it gets rid of them, it loses them if you would. Atmospheric CO2, nitrous oxide, carbon dioxide, and methane at the margin are increased in the atmosphere, so it increases greenhouse gases. Grits and screened solids are disposed of, so it gets rid of those very successfully. The sludge that's produced, which is essentially bacteria, are collected, dried, and disposed of, and then the water is disposed of as well. All of this costs the town money. There's no return. It's a cost item, and it's an expensive cost item on your budget. The issues at stake here, from what I've been told, are the issue of raising tariffs and fees in a project that will increase the capacity of the system there, and that capacity increase is mandated because you're above 80% of the design capacity of the system. You've got to do something, and it's a question of raising fees and tariffs, and that's a problem for any town, all towns. This problem of not having this new system in place prevents you from adding new businesses or new connections to your sewer system. So town development is effectively on hold until you can do this. So let's go to the next one. Okay, this is the system that we are proposing, and I say "we" including GE and Agroaquatics. The technology is a combination of the two, a sandwich if you would. We do the same thing. Raw influent comes in, we do a pre-treatment which takes the grit, and that's disposed of, just like the existing system does. We take screened solids and we grind those down very, very fine. This is a product that is currently taken to the landfill, is ground up very, very fine, and then that is taken, you have a separation of the solids and the liquids, and the solids go into an anaerobic digester where we produce energy, the dollar sign, the green one there at the top. We take the nutrients which are released. What we're trying to do with anaerobic digestion is take all of the goodness, the things that are in the solids, and extract them so that we can use them again. Energy, we can use, the nutrients in those solids, we can use, that goes back to the front of the plant again, and back through the system. And the final grit in the system is disposed of, but we try to extract and mine everything from the solids in wastewater. So we then go around the top and off to the right, and our liquids, which are clarified liquids, go into a duckweed treatment system, which is the core of our system, and we extract nutrients, and we grow protein. Now that is the key difference in a sense to the kind of system that you have right now. We're extracting nutrients and growing protein. And those proteins go into a biorefinery that we can use to produce plastics, we can use it to produce fish. So fish, I know I've heard people say they're interested in hearing about the fish. Well, yes, we would produce fish with the duckweed onsite, slightly to the side, but essentially onsite. So fish becomes an output, and you can see the dollar sign, it's got value. We can also produce protein isolates, powders, we can produce bioplastics. I won't get into the details of that, but the returns on fish or bioplastics are approximately equal. And then we take the water, which is now highly treated, the duckweed system will remove nutrients more efficiently than can an activated sludge system, which is the sequencing batch reactor system that you have now. So it treats the water to a much higher level. We can remove salts from your system, which renders that water more reusable as well. And then the system is filtered using systems that GE will provide, and disinfect it, again in part using systems that GE will provide, and you have a pure water that can be reused effectively for any purpose at all. We could even drink it if you want. Now, we're not suggesting that you redrink it, but what we are suggesting is that in this location, as I walk out in the desert, throwing any water away is not a good idea. So we intend to use 100% of that water in processes that will be there onsite, but also offer the water to the town as an option. So it's on offer, it will be as good as the water, it can be as good as the water that you're drinking right now in your faucet. So that's our basic system. And then to review the net result of the GE Agroaquatics Sandwich, I love getting my name with GE there, that's nice. Wastewater is successfully treated, we're treating wastewater very successfully. Nutrients now are preserved, we don't throw them away, and we make of those nutrients food or plastic. Atmospheric CO2, nitrous oxide, and methane are lesser, so we do not put anything into the environment that can enhance greenhouse gases. Grit is disposed of, just like the existing system. We reduce sludge and disposal costs dramatically, water recovery and complete. So we recover all the water and we reuse it, nothing, no water is thrown away. And because this is a fairly intensive system, a lot more jobs. The town shares in this in positive value. So there's a positive value generated, it's not a cost item, it's positive, it's a net result, and the town shares in that with us. And there's no need to increase tariffs, we feel that this would obviate any need to increase tariffs, and of course, future growth for the town now would be opened up. In fact, just to comment on the future growth, we can be responsive at the margin to demand for wastewater treatment in real time. So if you come with a factory, you want to put a factory in, and it needs X amount of wastewater treatment, the amount of time that it takes the factory to put itself in place, we can increase capacity at the margin. There's no big concrete treatment plants or anything, we can just add some acreage to the system and provide the level of treatment required. So demand responsive. Moving on, the core of all of this is duckweed, is something that I have lived with for the last 40 years, so I'm sort of the duckweed guy in the world, and I love it. It's a plant that all of you will have seen at some level. You know, you go by a pond that's got this little green stuff in it, it's the bright green, not algae, duckweed. And duckweed, moving on, is the world's smallest flowering plant. It is also the world's fastest-growing leafed plant. This is giant duckweed, you can see the giant is smaller than the thumb. We go on. This is actually the smallest duckweed species, it's called Wolfia ariza, and I want to show you this, sort of how duckweed grows. Every frond there has a small little appendage on it, and that appendage is really a daughter frond, so this grows biologically. You plant it once, and it grows forever. You don't have to plant a crop and harvest it and replant it, it continues to grow biologically forever. And those little fronds, each one will produce as many as nine offspring before itself dying, so we want to harvest it before it's done that, but it just keeps growing. And this particular plant is the fastest-growing plant or crop in the world, nothing grows faster. Duckweed has 35, in some species that've shown as much as 50% protein, so we're producing protein. And think of soybeans as about 36, 37% protein, duckweed has more, and it's got better amino acid, so it's better for you. I think of it as milk, it has the same amount of protein as milk, it has the same amount of water as milk, it has the same amount of fat as milk. It's milk, but it's great, and the green stuff's actually good for it. So this, I love this plant. Next one. This is the most common duckweed that you'll find, this is duckweed, well, it's called common, but Lemna minor. We probably will have this species, as I've looked in the drainage ditches in the valley here, this is the species that I've found more than anything. So if we move on. But my real love is for this one, this is called Lemna giba, this is a picture of some crop that we're growing in Lima or in Veranca, Peru, which is north of Lima. I love it, but you can see dug into the water, that's what you come up with a handful. So you're growing this crop constantly, harvesting continuously, the production is just staggering. We can grow 15 times as much protein on an acre today as can soybeans, and we believe we should be able to get to about 30 times as much very quickly. Moving on. And we've done this in a lot of different places, so you've seen Hookerton, North Carolina, it's a treatment plant that I've done up there, Ayotlán in Jalisco, near Guadalajara in Mexico, Fede Nafe in Peru, was the largest plant that I've done, that was 25 hectares, about 60 acres. And La Sanimas in Colorado, this was a treatment system that I did removing salt from wastewater discharge, and it was very successful. So moving on. This is complicated, it's complex, there are lots of little bits and pieces to it, but I wanted to show this as much as anything for the GE pieces. If you look at the top, there's a GE LEAP primary screens, and this is a system that is a mechanical system that actually separates liquids and solids, and then we've got other GE pieces at the bottom, most of them screening and filtering equipment that's essential to the whole sandwich package. The piece at the top right, aquaculture and aquaponics, is the piece that makes money, and that's a discreet system with its own wastewater treatment system. Moving on. This one is the same thing, but I show instead of duckweed feeding fish, is we're doing bioplastics and compounds. So we can have a system which produces bioplastics, it even goes beyond that, to produce compounds for commercial sale. And it's 100% naturally reinforced bioplastic that is biodegradable, so it's a fantastic plastic. Moving on. And just a quick introduction to the sandwich. This is GE, GE, and we have our piece in the middle. Moving on. This is the LEAP system, which is the, really the most robust, and I put it down the bottom, backwashing screen system in the world. I've used these myself, I was pleased the GE was actually making this system. It works extremely well, it's a small footprint, it does the same thing as a clarifier does, but it's a very small footprint system and very robust. These things are wonderful pieces of equipment. Moving on. Anaerobic digestion, this is a little larger than what we would have here, but we intend digesting all of our solids, extracting the nutrients, extracting the energy. These will be a piece of it, GE manufactures these systems. Next. The meat of the sandwich, just to show you sort of how this will look here, and I'm saying will, I'm hopeful. The top system on the left is the kind of system that we intend having here, so it will look very much like that. This is a continuous flow system. What you see there is only a piece of it, we would have this over several acres, but it will look more like the one on the left. We can do this in stacked trays, it's very efficient, we can do it indoors, and so on. These are experimental on the bottom left. The system on the right is a system that's older. Here, we don't have to have greenhouses, we can work with the system on the top left. Moving on. Quickly, and I'm not going to dwell on this, but basically duckweed is a complete nutrient removal system. It extracts salts, it extracts nutrients, and in the top we've got ammonia, we extract nitrates in terms of the N, the nitrogen compounds. We remove, after the nutrients have all been removed, we can remove heavy metals and toxins, but oddly enough, it removes nutrients greedily before it starts removing toxins. So you can separate the two, but anything that you need removing from water almost, you can remove with duckweed, it's incredibly efficient. We have systems that we recommend for mining waste, as an example, simply to remove toxic elements. Go ahead. And just to show sort of what this is really all about is a question of value added. We're taking your wastewater, which is nasty stuff, no one likes dealing with it, but it's got all this wonderful, it really, prawns, fish, protein isolates, feed stuff, targeted proteins, bioenergy biofuels as well, but the energy side is poor returns, but we can do that as well, it's a very efficient way to produce biofuels. And of course, we got the GE systems, filtration, this system will actually take out bacteria and it will take out viruses, which is incredibly efficient. These are the world's most efficient filtration systems, an integral part of the system after it's got through the duckweed. Thanks. And finally, if we want to redrink this water, we may do that, run it through reverse osmosis. Singapore, which is a very advanced city today, is recycling 30% of its wastewater into its drinking water. Eventually, 20 years from now, you'll look at the United States, particularly across the South, the Southwest, everybody will be redrinking their wastewater. We here have that option, it's an option that you can exercise, but it's an optional system. Moving on. Here's our existing plant, and let me say, I visited the plant the other day, it is working, and it is doing a good job, so that plant functions, but it costs you money. And moving on. What we're recommending is taking that whole site, the big in yellow, and getting that from BLM, and I've been told that we can get that, okay, that they will allocate that to this project over, say, a 30-year timeframe. The initial treatment plant will be down in the bottom in the green area, right next to the existing plant, but we have the option to expand up into all of that. And it's all a, think of it as a very remunerative, profitable farming system that's supplied and fueled by the citizens of this town. So...
What's your approximate acreage there?
Pardon? Acreage? I just looked at that as a logical place to get, but I'm assuming there we probably have something like 50 acres, something like that? Questions? Yeah?
I know that when you do aquaponics, a lot of people do tilapia, can you grow trout with this system? There's a reason I'm asking.
I had an interesting discussion with someone the other day about trout. Trout likes cold water, and we don't have a cold system. So what I would recommend growing here is certainly tilapia, the market's good, I talked to Whole Foods, they want, Cisco wants food, wants tilapia, so we can sell every bit of tilapia that we grow for premium prices, we're talking $4 a pound for fresh fillets, but my recommendation is barramundi. So I would recommend growing barramundi, if we can get the state to accept that, that's what I would recommend growing there. Better fillets, thicker fillets, more expensive, huge demand, fantastic.
Why do you ask about trout?
No.
Oh, because there's a federal deficit in funding the trout stocking program for this district and Mojave County, and because the big fish eat the trout, if they don't put the trout in fillets, what happens is the fish start eating each other, and the whole fishing economy of West Arizona goes in the toilet. And so this is a huge, the fish hatching thing was a big deal, that's why I asked specifically about trout.
We can do hatchery, trout is more complicated than I want to address.
I was gonna say, I know.
This is a money machine, yeah, so.
Okay, so...
Sorry.
And have you spoken to any of that fish?
Barramundi, B-A-R-R-A-M-U-N-D-I. If I say it, I have to say it with an Australian accent, barramundi. It comes back.
How big are these? Barramundis.
Barramundi are, you have essentially anywhere from an eight to a 10-ounce fillet, so you can think of the size of the fish. That's what, you know, Whole Foods wants 10-ounce fillet.
How does the evaporation in our high-temperature area affect this?
Yeah, evaporation is always an issue. Duckweed, when it grows on water, cuts the evaporation by about 50%. So if you have an open pond and a duckweed pond covered with duckweed, the duckweed pond will go down half as quickly as an open pond. So I'm big on evaporation, in fact, we have systems that we do completely enclosed, even in hot weather, and we use groundwater for cooling, but we can do it without any evaporation at all. Not recommended here, you've got enough water, but it's, you know, it's better than open ponds.
Does this water have to be added to the process at all, or is there enough water in the effluent?
There's enough water in the effluent to do that acreage that I showed you there, not the big one, but quite a bit more. We would also like to pick up all of the nutrient-laden waste that is dumped in landfills and so on, because that's, you know, that's wonderful stuff for us, we can grow duckweed, we want the water, so we hope that nothing gets dumped in any landfill or anywhere, we'll take it all.
Is the capital improvement in the system, is that paid for by the byproducts?
Easily, okay, the system recovers all its capital costs very, very quickly, you know, the return on investment is approaching 50% on an annual basis, so it's a very quick, it's a remunerative system.
Once the capital costs are paid, does the town share in the overage?
The system that we would recommend putting in here completely would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million. It may be a little higher, it may be a little lower, but I'm estimating around $8 million. The returns would be approximately just a little under half that on an annual basis.
Well, yes, what I'm saying though is, once the system's paid for, because of your capital investment, then what happens to the profits after the capital investment is repaid? Because I don't share any of that profit margin after the... Because I don't share any of that profit margin after that.
Yes, and maybe. I mean, what we're recommending, and this is a question to be negotiated with the town. Every circumstance is unique. The town has its requirements. People have their requirements. We recommend that the way this is done is as a joint venture, that the joint venture, which is a union, if you would, of the town and us, manages the circumstance forever. And that the owners of it, i.e. the town and us, and Lila will be heading that up, share in these profits. Now, exactly how that's shared, how the costs are shared, is something for careful discussion and negotiation. We feel there's enough returns, there's enough income here for everybody out the other side to be very happy.
For instance, for actual presentation?
Thank you.
You talk about the methane, gas being removed. How does the odor end up compared to what we have now?
Yeah. What you've got right now is not bad. What you're sending to the landfill, that's horrible. But the, no methane. So we capture all of the gas, the CO2 and the methane. We convert the CO2 using a unique process to methane. So we have essentially a natural gas that we produce out of the system. That will be compressed, we'll have a CNG system here. That compressed natural gas will be used to run the system, to generate electricity and to create heat that will supplement, you know, like the digesters need some heat, et cetera. So we'll use all of it, but there's nothing released as methane into the environment or CO2.
Where else? You mentioned Colorado and South Carolina. Where else in the United States?
This is an odd thing in that I've worked all my life doing international rural development in places like Bangladesh, India, et cetera. I have a system that is crude, if you look at it, but very, very effective, that has been operating in Bangladesh since 1988. And it has repaid for itself on the capital investment six times over in that period. And it treats, even in Bangladesh, where you don't have an EPA, you don't have anybody looking over your shoulder, it treats to a higher level than any wastewater treatment plant, for instance, in Texas, rather, which is striking.
For a, there's few in the United States.
There's fewer applications in wastewater.
Okay, right. But something like this is, could be a major draw to our community as far as tourism and...
Well, you're focusing, not so much on the tourism, that wasn't his interest, but our interest has been seeking basically a low or a neutral energy, or even a positive energy wastewater treatment, eloquent solution. Basically, the solution that you have right now is a sequencing battery. Great system, like all sets of the works. The trouble that I have as an engineer is that the traditional systems that we have for treating wastewater in the United States, activated sludge typically involves aeration. So we're running a blow, we're running mixers. We're putting a lot of energy into the footprint there. The eloquent solution to us would be, what if we can get a plan to do the same job in terms of converting the carbon, the nitrogen, the phosphorus? What if we can turn that into a growth mechanism that takes that, those nutrients basically out of the pitcher? Takes them out with a little bit of sunlight, a little bit of water, and the nutrient feed that you and your neighbors are going to provide. And what we do on the front end is we keep the objectionables out of the duckweed farm, and at the far end, we make sure that the objectionables don't get into the finer filtration devices that basically provide various degrees of reuse water for either your community or some of the receiving community. Now, I don't know when your community or any other is going to feel desperate enough to run everything through a reverse osmosis process and turn it into drinking water. And there are parts of Texas that are having to do that. They don't have any choice.
California as well.
Well, indeed. And, you know, in my years on the planet, the population in this country's doubled, okay? Our water resources haven't doubled. We've gotten a lot more efficient about using them, but as we continue to grow, those efficient uses are going to require us to do some things that my wife doesn't want to hear about. She doesn't want to hear the real story about the astronauts. They're not taking bottled water up into space. Okay? So eventually, hopefully not our generation, but the generations that are going to follow us. That is always an add-on type device. So sorry for the long response to you.
I think what she was trying to come across with is, is there any other area that you have, one of your plants that is similar to Quadsite?
The plant that we're describing, this proposed plant, does not exist, okay?
Can you guarantee?
This plant, this plant, there's nothing that isn't basically established technology. This is basically a collaboration. It's a marriage of some established mechanical technology with some established growth technology, combining those two into a treatment system.
We can, we can have, give you access to videos that show the duckweed piece treating wastewater in Bangladesh to a very high level. So it's being done around the world, but this, we are looking at three, four. Lila's in charge of this. She's the one doing this. Talk about it a bit.
We're actually looking right now, your town is not the only town that we are anticipating this type of project. We're working at TRC, which is over in New Mexico, and also Omito, Texas. Those are the three areas. One of the reasons that I'm very interested and involved in this project is because we have been working with small towns like this, and one of the biggest costs of your budget is treating that water. I mean, and the thing is that...
I would make the request. It's all right to face the audience, but if you could get over there and hold the mic around, because when you're speaking, like the audience, it's not into the computer for the record.
I apologize. So the idea from the business perspective of this is, is to be able to help a lot of these small communities, not only to cut down some of your cost of your wastewater treatment, but bring new jobs and be able to participate from the financial aspect of this. We're not asking you to put all of the money in this. This is something that we still have to present to the city. What we're looking is that, for instance, at TRC, they also have a four-and-a-half USDA grant, and that is what we're trying to establish. We're trying to establish one particular area so that way we can help the small communities, especially the rural communities. And that's the whole objective of this, is being able to have a win-win situation for everybody.
If, if the government is pushing people to go green and everything, would there be grants to assist with doing this?
The USDA, most of your grants usually cover half of your costs, and I am sure that the mayor will agree to that, even the situation that you have here, not everything that you have is coming just through grants, it's also through loans. And one of the things that we're trying to avoid is for you to get into, into a major loan in the millions and not be able to pay it. So our interest is to come in as a public-private partnership and be able to work this out. So you're not the only one that will be taking the risk, it will be also our group.
How many states in the continental United States are these plants set up at this time?
I've done plants, small plants in North Carolina primarily, because I lived there for a while, but a large, a full-town system, a commercial system, these ones that Lila is addressing right now will be the first. And this was a commitment on my part to come in and do this, and having GE come in as a partner to address this with their pieces, our pieces, we now have a complete system that we're very comfortable with, and we're representing this out as commercial systems to towns such as yours. So there's got to be a first. This may be the first, but you got to do this before Truth or Consequences or Omito in Texas. So we're looking at three right now.
My question is about timeframe. If the town were to say, yes, we'd like to do this, what type of timeframe are we looking at? Because BLM can take a long time to get land from, and so are we looking at something that's like five weeks away, two, three years?
I was assured by the BLM people I talked to in DC that this can be streamlined and done very quickly, because it has a purpose to it that is shining, as they said it to me. So I'm confident we get the BLM land very quickly. Certainly, we can get the engineering pieces, we can get the money in place, we can get all those things done and have it shovel-ready waiting for BLM. On an engineering side, this is really simple. There's not anything difficult from an engineering point of view to be done here. All of that can happen very, very quickly. The financing side of it, I believe this circumstance could be done very, very quickly as well.
I'm still wondering, timeframe-wise, are we...
Maybe, maybe we could be, you know, digging ground in a year. So I'm saying it could, we could get to actually doing something within a year. And, yeah, we'd have to work hard at it. The state is going to be the hardest piece to get over because this is new, but we've dealt with Texas, so there's a certain reciprocity between Texas and Arizona authorities in environmental quality, and I believe this can be moved very, very quickly. Having GE onboard is no small thing. So these things can move quickly.
Can I ask you, she brought up about trout. Trout would pay much more. Is there any feasible way of doing the effluent refrigerated down to the temperature that the trout could live?
I love this interest in trout. Let me say this simply, that if we do this, I'll look at the trout issue. But trout up front, no.
Well, it pays better.
You haven't had barramundi.
No, I haven't. So we're having a barramundi barbecue against Fourth of July. There you go.
There you go.
My concern is the plant itself. How is it going to withstand 118 degrees for days on end that we have here with that mechanical?
Right. Yes and no, right? So when you have, you know, we, the depth of the systems are designed to be accommodating to questions of heat. We use spray systems that are automated, that are automatic, that come on and they essentially inundate the plant when it gets too hot. So in, you know, sort of 5:00 in the afternoon, 4:00 in the afternoon, on the hottest days, we may have quite a bit of spray going on. We lose water when we spray, but we can deal with heat. I've grown this in India with similar temperatures, no problem. In fact, it loves hot weather, it just doesn't like to get too hot like the rest of us.
Well, is our water here to start with, you know, summertime, you don't have to have cold water to take it out?
You mean you have to have...
Agreed. No problem. Duckweed likes its temperature to be at 95 degrees. So when you get to 95 degrees, it continues to increase its productivity. After 95 degrees, it's a steep drop-off. So if you look at water temperature, if you take anything that's got two and a half feet of water in it, and you dip your hand in that at 3:00 in the afternoon, at the top, if it's not moving, you'll find it's gotten very hot. But you go down six inches, eight inches, you'll be amazed at how much cooler it is. We mix all of that water, and so we are able to keep the temperatures at a range, not a problem. We have an application in which we'll be growing this in greenhouses that are completely covered in the middle of the summer in near Al Paso, Texas. Massive temperatures, but we're cooling with groundwater, groundwater. And the reason we're keeping it covered is that we're using it as a desalination system that will desalinate brackish water, growing duckweed in the summer for free essentially, because you're making money with the product that creates, that desalinates. So this is an interesting experiment we're going to be conducting over the next year or so, but temperature here, no problem.
How about duckweed being an invasive plant? Could it be an invasive plant over in California or such a place?
I invite you to go down to Blythe and look in some of the drainage ditches. Go to Parker, look in the drainage ditches. You'll see duckweed. We will use local species of duckweed exclusively. No environmental problems.
Since you have a confined set of water flowing through your system, what is the pH?
pH?
Yeah, 7.5?
Duckweed is very good on pH. We like to keep our pH anywhere below 7.5. Above 7.5, things happen to nitrogen that we don't like, so we can affect that chemically if we need to, but anything below 7.5, we're all happy. Down to 5.5.
So no problem maintaining that?
No problem.
And how many people would it take to rent a plant for something the size of Quadsite?
Our initial staffing on this is in the 20s, so we're talking 20 jobs. As we grow, and, you know, we haven't presented it here, but there are approaches to making this system much larger, you know, to the extent that we can use water and water's available, we can make it much, much larger. Think of it as a business. Staffing may go up in the 50, 60, 70-inch.
On this type of system that you showed here, is there a capacity of people that can use this system, or would you have to later on down the road extend, add more to it?
I mentioned to the council that we can grow on a real-time basis. So if you feel that you need to grow and we need higher capacity, then we can grow very quickly.
Well, the system that you've got proposed for Quadsite right now?
Yes.
What's the population?
I'm proposing something that will handle about double your population, you know, your standing population. So it would have a capacity, if you want to think of it as just a wastewater treatment bed, up to 1.2 MGd. Right now, your standard flow is about 300, 250,000 gallons per day, maybe even three times that size. No harm done because, you know, the larger capacity, unlike a treatment plant that's just costing money, that larger capacity actually makes more money. So we actually get a return on something that's larger.
And we see in the winter time?
Correct.
I would have a question.
Sure.
And she's trying to ask the question, I'm going to put it in engineering terms, the turn-down ratio. We have a huge population influx in January and February, and then July and August it goes away. So what would be the turn-down ratio between operating this plant?
I thought that through, obviously, because your winter population here is something that's globally renowned. I mean, it's, I've seen the picture. In fact, I drove through this last February. This is a question that we need to discuss in terms of what capacity. A lot of the waste that's generated here is sent to the landfill, and not all of the waste from your winter visitors comes here. In fact, we have, Blythe takes in some of your waste. I would like to keep all of that waste. So the question of how big do we make it is a question for discussion and negotiation. I'd like to see nothing go to the landfill, certainly nothing go to you guys. So it's, yeah, because it's just money. You're farming what these town people and the visitors provide.
Okay, which you're still not quite answering. You know, if you build facility X, and then you got this little capacity in July and August, that's turn-down. Does it still operate efficiently with very little infill?
Let me answer it this way. The design of the system that we're talking about may be 1.2 MGd. That will treat this much coming in, this much nutrient, and this many acres... and this many acres of duckweed facility. If we double or triple that, in fact, we can triple it. We can still grow duckweed in the system, because we have enough water. The hydraulics are adequate to the circumstance. So we could have a triple, fairly large system, but we would not have enough nutrient to provide for the duckweed during the off-season. However, there are many approaches that we can use to provide the nutrient that we want. And one of those is very simply taking other people's sludge. So I can take from Blythe, for instance, they've got sludge that they want to get rid of. We could even bring that up here and digest it. We're making energy, we're releasing nutrients, we're growing duckweed. It all ends up being a hydraulic issue. And I, you know, can we get more water? I'd love more water, but I know that that's almost impossible here. So we live with what we've got. We can treat most of what we get from the population. We can certainly digest it all and, you know, produce nutrients, but you know...
If you cut from, you know, 1.3 million, whatever, down to 300,000 in July and August, will the plant die?
Mr. Mayor, let me interject. The most fixed components that we would have in this proposed system would basically be, you've got a core screening and grid removal system that's at the very headworks of your existing facility, which is going to stay in place. And that facility has a peak efficiency and a certain flow rate. It gets a little bit less efficient at low-flow rates and high-flow rates. The grid removal system doesn't work quite as well, and so on and so forth. The downstream of that, that GE LEAP primary is basically a traveling belt screen. And that travel is basically regulated by the head loss going through that screen. That screen sees a lot more head loss when the flow is higher, because more debris is traveling at the screen. The instrumentation senses that head loss, it speeds the screen travel up. Likewise, when the flow's down, this screen, screening speed slows down to the limit for that. We're also talking about multiple units, at least two, maybe three. So when we've got lower flows, that flow is going to be directed at less than all three of those screens, if you will.
Okay, well, we're talking to mechanics, though. And he's talking to my allies. And my question is, if you cut this flow, we don't have the water, we don't have the nutrients in July and August, will it kill the plant or will it still operate?
All we do then is we just take sections of it and close it down. We can only produce what we've got.
That's the question.
Right now, the flow right now is about 350 gallons, 1,000 gallons per day. That flow will allow us, the treated water, will allow us to extend our system and keep it going. If we add some nutrients to that, use nutrients brought from other places, Blythe is an example, fantastic. You know, we can keep it all going and all making money. So it's not a problem.
Paul, you keep pointing to Blythe here. You mean we can sell our 300 tons of beer to you?
Will you cover that thing?
Oh, now they're selling it. See what happens?
Well, don't forget Parker, we can get a bidding war going.
My question is, on that take, I've been kind of thinking about it. What you would do is, because you're the system of, per se, racetracks of duckweed, and it flows through at a slow rate. And so when it's slowed down, when you don't have the peak capacity of flow, input flow coming in, then you would just, per se, turn the valve down. It's effluent, and you would hold the liquid in there longer, and you would have to add nutrients to it.
Correct.
So instead of getting, instead of the same flow effluent coming out, then they would retain it in these troughs longer.
Correct.
That's the way I'd read it.
Correct. That's good.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
One more question. We apologize.
One more question from the audience and council members actually want their turn, so...
You said that you've done smaller-scale systems. Just out of curiosity, what's the smallest kind of scale system that, you can get a little bird in the middle of nowhere that wanted to do this, instead of like going on the grid and tying into a system, something in an incorporated area? What's the, sort of the smallest version of this that could be done?
A household.
I'm going to say a household. Cool.
We'd do that. We can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more perfect question, if I may ask.
Sure, you may.
In terms of the EPA and the state, the state's still going to hold the municipal capacity that's city responsible for the effluent coming out. At that take, will the city have someone on staff?
The city will be...
The plant that you built?
Yeah. The city is a partner. And so the city's requirements are paramount. And so what we have to do...
Right.
And making money with it. So that's a given. But if we want to grow bigger, and you've got more nutrients you want to bring in...
You'll need more water.
Water is a constraint.
Okay, now you were also concerned about the temperature of water for cooling. You realize even our groundwater, our well water, is hot here.
Correct.
We don't use water heaters in the summertime.
We won't be cooling with groundwater in these systems. What we do is we do a spray and we mix the water. The water, the system mixes, so we keep...
Yes, one cooler.
We keep it all mixed. It's not going to be cool, but it will be, it will be below 95 degrees.
Summertime, if you evaporate water around here, the humidity is so low that you get wet bulb temperatures down around 6 degrees, so...
Yeah, exactly.
Now, my other question is the financial upside of it. What's this going to cost the town? Initial capital outlay?
You have a circumstance right now with a USDA $3 million grant that you haven't exercised. We would like to look and see if we can access that, reprogram that. Washington may have to get involved. You'll have to have the state people be favorable to this. I think they will be. We're doing the same thing in New Mexico. If we can reprogram that money, that's all we're talking about, is that money being invested in this. The balance of the financing, we will raise commercially. Remember, we're dealing with a project that has a net return.
I understand, but there is still the initial capital outlay.
Correct. And we can get financing in, project and raise that. Lila, you're looking at her right here, says she can do it.
My wife said she can do a lot.
Yeah, I mean, one of the questions might just ask, what's the bottom line? Also, what exactly is the town responsible for? This sounds wonderful, but what are we responsible for?
You're a partner in this, so you would be responsible for what you're doing right now, which is collecting all the wastewater and getting it to that point. So that function is not going to change. We're not talking about raising fees, but you would maintain your same fee structure as you do right now to cover whatever costs you have. The balance is a joint venture, public-private partnership, if you would, that you guys sit on the board, we sit on the board, maybe GE sits on the board. That company is what will manage this, and will have employees, and it will be a business that you will run with us. But we will manage that, it's not going to be the city is doing this. It'll be a joint venture.
May I suggest something? Right now, this is just a very preliminary presentation to you. I really think that you would need a lot more information, and I would like to suggest, if you could allow us to do a proposal for you, you know, to outline every aspect of the project, so that way you can understand what is involved from the perspective of permitting or our share of the costs and the benefits and so forth. So I'd like to recommend it, if you would allow us to submit a pre-proposal outlining the whole plan.
That was my next question. What, were you willing to do that, like at this?
Absolutely.
We can't make that decision now. So is this, because this is discussion, am I correct? Oh, yes, yeah. It's presentationally, this is...
Presentationally, there's a couple of things I'm concerned with about the financials. ADQ, the state, with, are you folks aware of the situation that our plant is in right now? With all of the necessary repairs that need to be paid, the engineering that's already been done, the amounts of money that the municipal property corporation already owes, that we're paying on, I mean, all of these things have to factor into any of this period. Because we already owe a lot of money, and we're already making a lot of payments. And if WIFPA doesn't buy into this, town looks to pay back about $1,000,000 to them that we're already scheduled to be making payments on. So there's a whole big thing here, not just, you know, we can do this and this and this.
Can I make a simple comment on that? This should come out when all is said and done, and we've worked out how we're going to do this, with the town receiving an annual dividend from this project. Those funds should be used to pay down your existing debts, et cetera, the town's debts. And they will be available, if we keep this going indefinitely into the future. This is a cash machine.
And you don't really need to make a decision. I mean, right now, this is just a presentation, and we are aware of your loans and the politics and everything else that's going on. I will assure you that you would have a better outlook by really looking at the details of what we're going to show you. We will take every aspect into consideration. And that's what you need to do, is be able to say, okay, this goes, you know, is this feasible for us to do? And that's what we want to do, is present you with a lot more details in order for you to make a decision. And this will be a preliminary proposal, you know, because we don't know whether this is going to be a benefit to you from your perspective, your situation. And not only that, is that, as Paul has told you, is that he has gone through a lot of issues of the environmental issues. Anything can shut you down, especially the environmental. So we have to go and discuss this with the environmental department here for the Arizona. So that's all, that's, we wanted to share the opportunity and the solution with you, just like we are with the other cities. And I think that the next step, if you would allow us, is to do that preliminary study, so you can be more informed of what we're trying to do.
I'd like to see you bring back this proposal that ADQ says we can do it.
Well, ADQ with BLM, I mean, all of those factors have to come in.
Because BLM is awfully slow doing anything. So we'd like to see all of this in the proposal.
It's a kind of a cart and a horse issue with that. The only way the BLM, as an example, or ADQ can make a responsible answer is to be presented with all of the data and to address it. To say, well, we're going to get an approval from them before we even discuss anything. They don't have a clue. They're not knowledgeable about the system, and they certainly can't make an intelligent assessment without being presented. So we would have to move forward with this, with the understanding that we're going, as a partnership, to seek approval from the environmental department here in the state, and to get this from BLM. I can assure you that we have contacts with BLM at the Washington DC level that are very favorable to this. This is the kind of thing that they feel good about doing. So we don't have to think that we're bound by bureaucracy. This is a great thing. It's a great story. Same thing for the state, okay, sorry.
You know what? I think we should direct staff at this point to put it on the agenda at the next meeting of this group, to discussion and possible action about working with a proposal. How's that something? We can do that, we can direct staff at this point.
How about, how about we just direct staff for maybe some townwork sessions or something else?
Well, we can't ask for a proposal, because it's not on the agenda right now, but we can direct staff to put it on the next agenda.
Is that enough time?
I don't think so.
Well, the proposal is a, you know, the thing is when they could actually...
We can put it back on the agenda as soon as we receive a proposal or a new discussion item.
Yeah, there's a lot of...
That's flexible. Yeah, and, yeah, staff doesn't need direction, they accept a proposal.
Sure.
If I may ask one question?
Sure.
Okay, if you could clarify a discrepancy. You're saying that the Fortsight facility would be, you know, something almost entirely new, one-of-a-kind. You did reference a North Carolina facility. Can you explain why the North Carolina facility isn't...
Isn't functioning right now?
Well, it's not a model here, or, you know, is there a private... What I'm really getting at is, is there an active public-private partnership in North Carolina that we can look at? Or is that, is that a private, national project?
No, it's not. And it became an issue there between an engineering firm and the town, and et cetera, et cetera. So the system is, in fact, oddly enough, on hold, because the contractor in that project, now I started it up and grew duckweed in it, but the contractor absconded with funds and then went bankrupt, and there's a lawsuit. So that lawsuit has been ongoing now for seven, eight years.
I guess what I'm looking for is, is there a functional model that we can look at?
I can send you a video, just in access, a video that you can look at, which is in BubbaDitch.
Is that on the website?
It's on the website, okay? So it's crude, in a sense, but functionally, it does the same thing we're talking about, and it treats that plant. I can send you articles that have reviewed it in US journals. That plant treats wastewater to a higher level than any treatment plant in the state of Arizona. And that's, that's in BubbaDitch, with no ADQ, nothing.
All right. Then, forget all the issues that we have for the startup of this. Five years down the road, you're seeing a net profit for yourself and for the town?
Right.
Okay, we're paying off our existing loans with those funds?
Absolutely.
Okay, and...
They're yours to do in a way that you see fit.
Right. So what's the profits, what, after it's up and going?
To be negotiated.
No, I understand. Well, I'm not looking for dollar ratios or percentages. I'm just, I'm looking at how that's...
That's going to be, that can be presented in the proposal, because there's too many variables, you know, so let's do, let us show you first what we want to present, and then we can go from there.
All right, I guess that's...
You do have a business model in mind.
How much of the existing plant would you use?
How many of the...
How much of the existing plant?
The existing treatment plant.
Would you actually use any part of the existing treatment plant?
We could use the very front end, which is grid removal and screen, bar screen.
Possibly sludge, right?
Perhaps. Yeah, disinfection, although disinfection is chlorine, and personally, I object to chlorine. So we can argue about that one. But a little bit, put it that way.
Okay, and the type of jobs that we're looking at bringing in? Are we talking about, you know, just like day laborers, we're talking skilled, technical?
We're talking about skilled laborers. We're producing fish, we're producing duckweed. We're looking for people who work hard and are skilled in what they do. So the business plans that I do have a relatively high pay scale of it, with incentives built into that. But then again, this is a joint venture. So how we set these kinds of prices in this town is not so much my mandate, but it's something that we do together.
I have a work session where we ask the different ADQ to attend. I think the BLM should now, because all of those organizations went and took all of them. So there may be some of the questions that we are just missing.
Margaret, use your microphone, please.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
I'm asking for a work session where we invite somebody from ADQ, we invite somebody from BLM, because those organizations are going to have to be involved. And they may have questions that we're just not thinking of. So I would like to see something like that scheduled as well.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask them to make decisions. You don't want people to come into this blind and be put on the spot. So these things, they need to be educated before they come in. And it needs to be done in a way that makes sense for them and makes sense for us. But yes, I think it's a, it's a good thing to have them all involved. No question. They have to be.
Bring them in as observers, even if they're not ready to answer questions themselves.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And then that's what a work session is. And we're not asking them to come on the spot. We're asking them to come up with questions that need to be answered.
Correct. No issue. What I've done in Texas is worked with Texas Environmental Quality for two years. And they took me to the cleaners and back with questions. And there were certain mandates that they required that we had to adjust to. And I would expect that to happen here as well.
Anybody got any questions? Or can we draw this to a close?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I look forward to the proposal.
Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda, Higali Cemetery Regulation Four. Denise?
Denise Ross.
Hang on. Could you folks in the back there take it outdoors on the patio so we can continue with the meeting? Thank you. All right, Denise.
We did this the last meeting. And I guess we're just trying to okay.
Basically, what you're saying is you want a time limit because it wasn't addressed with the original. And that would be that if they have proof purchased, the headstone or produce proof within six months that their $150 is not refundable.
Right.
Kind of moves them along. They're not taking five years to get headstones.
Yes. Or else they have proof that they have ordered it.
Yeah.
This is the final form now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two issues.
That's right, we did ask.
Yeah, we asked that if we do it right. Yeah, we did.
What, let's see here.
That was for transfer.
We're on item four, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, what, yeah. We're not talking about the transfer document. This is the regulations. What's happened is that the cemetery board has met and have made an amendment, I suppose, to an existing document. If you look at page two, it's highlighted.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, but we have incorporated some new language for the headstone deposit, correct?
Yes.
So it's a $200 headstone deposit. So $50 of that is to set the headstone. With $150 of that now refundable upon proof of headstone purchase within six months. So we're setting a limitation, but it's not... The full $200 isn't going to be refunded. $50 of it is going to be refunded.
And this is not your transfer of ownership?
No, this is not, this is not the transfer.
That's what we asked for.
The council directed staff to incorporate the notary language. That should be a requirement, correct? Unless you want to...
I do need to clarify. The question we had after leaving the last-minute meeting, which was related to the Higali Cemetery, a question raised by the mayor, was whether, because the form said transfer of ownership, or whether there needed to be a notary. My question, because most municipal cemeteries do not actually transfer ownership of a plot. One does, that I know of, and represents that town. But it turns out that's an anomaly. What, my understanding of what Quartzsite does is you own the plot. It's the right to use the plot, the burial easement, or whatever we're going to call it that gets transferred. That is not a transfer of real property. That does not require a deed or a notary or anything like that. So with that clarification, that you continue the ownership, it's just what gets transferred as a right to use doesn't require...
All right.
What's before you tonight, though, is the amendments and regulations?
Right, okay. Do I have a motion to accept the regulation form?
Make a motion to approve the amended Higali Cemetery Regulation Form for Use.
Second.
Moved and seconded. To approve the form as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. Higali Cemetery Board Appointments. Consider the appointment of one regular member to the Higali Cemetery Board with a term ending December 2015. And going back and forth.
Yeah.
All right, fine. Yeah, I got that. And we are appointing...
We're looking at two names.
Are Ms. Berger or Ms. Eppson in the audience? Would you get the turn and come up here and introduce yourself at the podium?
You're both gorgeous.
I'm Audrey Berger and I'm a third-year resident. Carol Lynn Stimson. Most people know me by Lynn. I've just moved back to Quartzsite, but I did come here in 1995 and lived inside the city limits. And I'm very concerned with the cemetery. I like our cemetery a lot.
Do I have a nomination for one of these ladies?
I'd like to nominate Audrey Berger. And I would like to explain why her over Lynn Stimson is that we just appointed Lynn, I think, on to the Municipal Board of Adjustment. And Audrey is not on a board. You know, she's actively involved in the community. And I'm so thankful to have both of them. And both of them do a great job. I almost wish we had two openings.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. So I'm sorry, Ms. Eppson, you'll have to stick with it.
I'll still pick up later.
We have a nomination for Audrey Berger for the position on the Quartzsite Cemetery Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Audrey. Go to work. Okay. County Prosperity Summit. And I didn't see you put that under the...
It's going.
Did you ever bring that forward?
Yes. I was actually approached by Supervisor Wilson. He contacted me requesting that I put this information in front of council. He is looking to form a regional partnership, if you will, with county and surrounding communities. He is hoping to provide the Potts County, to have La Potts County host a prosperity summit. And this is a program that's going on through the National Association of Counties. So he's not asking for any financial obligation or, you know, support in this endeavor. But he's looking at us being a co-applicant to strengthen that application to the National Association of Counties.
Has he brought this before any other councils? Before any other communities?
He, I haven't checked on him, but he said he was going to push this out to other groups. So I think it's Parker as well.
County.
Yeah.
Yeah, Parker's the only other.
Right. There's also an opportunity that, you know, a group of counties can also get together and be co-applicants as well. So I don't know his full extent, but I'm passing the information that he provided to me. Do you?
Yeah, with the three of them, I hope that we do go this way because since four counties will be selected to participate in this opportunity to host national experts and local leaders in an economic development workshop to generate creative solutions for building the local economy. And we really need that. La Potts County is a very poor county. That means Parker is, they are, and they are. We're all in this together. And I think we would be perfect for this. And I think, I'm writing a vote with him. I think it'd be a fantastic thing to host this, take part in it. Because they will look at each community. They will look at the county, see what we need, and then make suggestions. And these are going to be experts that are coming in and talking to us, making suggestions about, you know, hey, you have all this property you don't care. And this would be a good idea and generate this many jobs. And I think it would be a win-win for all of us that are involved in it.
Could I get a motion then that we pass the resolution to...
It's not a resolution.
I move we pass a resolution.
No, it's not a resolution. I make a motion to apply to become a co-applicant of County Parker and La Potts Economic Development Corporation in an effort to have La Potts County selected to host a county prosperity summit in collaboration with the National Association of Counties.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded. And I am not going to try to repeat all of that. All right. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor of being a co-sponsor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous, okay. Executive session, do I have a vote?
I move we adjourn to executive session. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn to executive session. We'll be right back, folks. I'm calling this regular session. I'm a council town of Quartzsite back to order. A little press piece called Room.
Mayor Foster?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Crooks?
Here.
Councilmember Orgeron?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Timberlake?
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is Chief of Police Employment Contract Consideration and Possible Incurrence on Employment Agreement with Lee Alarez as the town of Quartzsite Chief of Police pursues Town Code Section 401.3.
I move we approve the contract to be presented to Lee Alarez, Quartzsite Chief of Police.
Second.
Effective October 13th. Effective October 13th, I thought it was.
Yeah.
Yes, October 13th.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, just a little. I always have something to say. But in my vote, I just want the people to know that I believe that the way I vote is to protect the taxpayers out there so there's not any large payouts. We all know that there are going to be changes made in the council. We don't know what those changes are going to be to the police department. So he has been informed of the situation here. Full disclosure's been made since then. I think that we've done a good job of protecting the taxpayers and also a good job in helping the new chief. He's a very good man. And I think it's our responsibility to look out for him and to look out for the people. And I think that's what we're trying hard to do.
I also agree that we need a chief of police. I do believe we're paying too much money. It's been passed a consensus here, so I accept that right now. Any other discussion? All right, me and God will go to the vote. We should vote. I will call on this one.
Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Crooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Orgeron?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Timberlake?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Very good.
Moving on. Communications. Announcements and reports from the mayor. I do have a report somewhere in the back. Am I good with it? Here with me here? Put a note on the inside so I can't read it. Okay.
You're supposed to have it memorized by now. I just got it. Well, you're supposed to have it memorized.
All right. The announcement is concerning the election. Vote total was 1,772 votes were cast in the primary election for four open seats. What that means is that each ballot had entitled to vote four times on each ballot. That's why so many, it wasn't that many ballots cast, but that's why there were so many votes. So what we're going to do here tonight is explain the whole process so there's no misconceptions. Two of the candidates received more than 50% of the votes cast in order to be directly elected at the primary election, Mr. Simpson and Ms. Warner. And they have since received their certificate of election effective on the general election date. The names of four candidates would normally be placed on the general election ballot. And they would have received nominating certificates at that last election. However, there were two of those candidates in that runoff, or that election, that received the same numbers of votes. Under state law, there was a mandated recount necessary. And that was done. And the result ended up to be still tied. And under Town Code, somewhere here. What, I gotta look. Somewhere, under Town Code, what is, I don't have code here in front of me. Do you know what it was? What's Town Code? What section of the Town Code? Anyhow, under Town Code, if two persons in the general, or primary election receive an equal number of votes, both names shall be placed upon the ballot. So now, therefore, we have five names on the ballot for the general election. It will be Ms. Kelly, Ms. Timberlake, Mr. Davidson, who by right was nominated, and Mr. Trainer, who was by title, listen. Did I tell them?
Terry Frostow.
Terry Frostow also received nominating votes. So that is how the election will proceed. There will be five names on the general election ballot for two seats, okay? All right. Now, that is it. If anybody wants to know the ARSs and Town Code, it's available in the library. You can go and look to see that. But we have complied with all state ARSs and Town Codes in this election at this point. So the votes remain the same. So we no longer have, we don't have to redo the canvas of the vote. That has been done. The canvas we did at the last meeting will stand because the vote did not change. And we are set to go for a general election in November. So, thank you.
Next.
Reports from council.
Nothing. I have nothing.
All right, no reports from council. Report from the town manager.
I'm not trying to abbreviate this tonight, ma'am. So, all right, good evening. All right. La Potts County Board of Supervisors hosted a work session Monday morning, just yesterday. And they were hosting representatives from BLM. And they were discussing trail closures, or more specifically, it was the transportation management plan.
Trail management.
Trail, what?
Trail management.
It's travel management. Thank you.
I was getting it wrong.
So as I understand it, and I'm coming on board... So, um, as I understand it, and I'm coming on board this fairly late in the game, this has been a very long, ongoing process, uh, some of the information that came out that, that I want to highlight, uh, is that BLM would like to implement their, their travel management plan within a year, all right, uh, but they're, they're starting up a new round of, of Town Hall meetings, so, uh, they presented this as kind of, kind of a, an opening or an introduction to this new round, and they are proposing to have some, some local meetings. Some of the concerns that I saw right off the bat with, with the data that they were providing, uh, was that the data that was presented was, was unchadrised, didn't differentiate between the different types of trails, you know, whether, um, you know, whether it was something was, was a county-owned, uh, road, if you will, or a route, it was very ambiguous, so, I think they need to clear that up before, uh, you know, anyone can make an informed, uh, opinion on it. Uh, the proposed closures, uh, to me, they seem to somewhat arbitrary at, at this time, uh, they didn't really go into the, the reasoning, uh, behind why this trail got closed versus, versus the other that was right next to it, so, I think they, again, can present that, uh, better, and then there was limited available material, uh, ambiguous definitions as to, you know, route versus trail versus road, uh, partial closures, seasonal closures, they, they didn't get into that, so, hopefully, as they start up this new round, they will, um, get, get more detailed, so, uh, what impressed me, though, was the level of public participation, uh, there were a lot of folks from the, not just Parker, but, uh, Quartzsite made the trip up, and, uh, the participation and, and the passion, uh, that, that was shown on this issue is unbelievable, it's phenomenal, so, uh, it's certainly something I'll, I'll keep an eye on and, and report to council, so. Uh, the Quartzsite Health and Development Services Board met earlier today, uh, on their agenda were applications for public funding for eligible nonprofits, uh, the council will receive a report, uh, on this, uh, in the near future, and, uh, there will be recommendations coming out of that board, uh, for, for review by this council, so, uh, finally, uh, the cemetery is putting on their Walk, uh, Walk of the Past, uh, November 1st, uh, they still need volunteers, specifically two male volunteers, preferably with, uh, some sort of military background, and that's all I have for tonight.
Uh, I, I'd sort of like to add one thing to your, the comment period has been extended by the BLM for, on the trail closing, and that's important, if there's anyone that needs to be concerned about.
Right, and I'll, I'll, I'll take over if I may, so that's violate the, the agenda, uh, so they are asking for additional comments, that's part of the Town Hall sessions, uh, but what they're looking for really is specific comments, not general, generalizations of, you, you should leave all our, all our trails open, they want to know, this trail is important to me, and here's why, uh, if, if you can make a, a, that sort of claim to them, they, um, will put a priority on keeping that, that particular, uh, route open, so, at, at least that's what they're reporting at this time, so, hopefully, we're going to get more detailed information and, uh, you know, the full report will be available. Is that fair, sir?
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, uh, next is call to the public, anyone have anything good for the good of the order tonight?
We're going to do the timer a little different this time, it'll be in the top right corner by the.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sue Ellen Pennington, and I'm from the Quartzsite First Assembly of the church, and I am one of the children's ministry, uh, well, whatever you want to call me, anyway, uh, Carla had to go home with her daughter because it was getting too late, so she asked me to present this, so, what I would like to do is to present you two events that we will be hosting at our church, the first one at our church is going to be our spaghetti dinner fundraiser, it's going to be held on October 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., we are selling tickets for this event, they are $6 a plate, and we will also be selling at the door. This event will help support the children's program in doing all kinds of activities through the year, for example, our third annual fall festival that we will be hosting at the community center on October the 25th. This event is open for all of the families of Quartzsite, where it will be a fun-filled day for the whole family, with games, prizes, face painting, our puppet show, hayride, jump house, and karaoke. We will also have a food booth, this is a way for families to spend a day together having good, safe fun, last year, we had a great turnout for this event, at least 50 people came and enjoyed the whole afternoon. We are looking for any kind of donations, such as prizes for the games, cakes for the keewalk, candy for goodie bags that every child receives, anyone who would like to help for this event, please see either Carla or myself, uh, I'm also at the senior center, we welcome all donations and help to make a safe, fun afternoon for the children of this community. The funds we bring in will also help in sending the children to summer camp, we also have a Christmas party for the children, and we do vacation Bible school, this year, we serviced 30 children, and it was a wonderful turnout, the last two years, we gave soup bags made by the children at VBS to the food bank. These are all good ways to make a positive impact in the lives of our children, because the children are the, the future of our community, and we really need to show our support in helping them grow up to be good leaders, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I am Pam Caskey, and I am a resident of Quartzsite, I just, um, would like to express that it, tonight had a lot of one positive pressurement here, and I hope that it can keep up that way, there's been negatives in the past, there's been threats to people, and everything else, and it's just, we need to keep positive in order for the town to go on, and stop bickering, and everything else is just not good for the town, people are very supportive, the 4th of July event was great, it was well-run, along with the, the, um, yeah, levitate thing, but, I don't, I don't, the only way I can use it for an example is, a while back, I found out when they were doing the, um, cotton industries last year, that I was thinking about making jellies and jams, and I found out I could not do that, it's against the law, and I says, no problem, I have a lot of jellies and jams, I'll just give them to the people at the food bank that have kids, well, somebody said to me, well, if you're going to show sides, people aren't going to want to buy you jellies and jams, and I said, I don't care, I'm having fun giving them away, and that's just the way I am, and I hope everybody else can, if you get a negative, give it back with a positive, don't wipe out those, those negatives, because that's not the way the town is going to grow, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor and Council, Shenanoree Goldenberg, uh, speaking of the food bank, I was there this morning, and it was very disturbing to see what the government is doling out to the people that are hungry, I took a picture, and this is for one month for family of four, there are two cans of low-sodium sliced potatoes, little cans, uh, 15 ounces, there's two cans of vegetarian vegetable soup, and that looks like 10.75 ounces each, okay, so there's four cans, there's one bag of whole wheat rotini, or rotini pasta, it's nice, it's whole wheat, there's one bag of dried beans, there's, there's 1% milk, naturally produced, um, and I don't know what size that is, it looks like a port, maybe, and for dessert, we have 15 ounces of raisins. Now, I would like to encourage our community to step up and add to this, the, I happened to be there when the Lutheran church drove in with their donations, they spent another $500, and the excitement when they pulled in was amazing, and, you know, I drove home, and I'm looking at this picture, and I'm like, what is going on? And I saw two applications today, one was 2.3 miles behind, over near this bridge, another one was alongside the, um, the road, the frontage road, and then when I was there, and I was there for a short time, there was another man that came in, and it was his first time making an application, oh, our community has got to do something, it's only going to get worse, it's only September, we're having more and more people come in, and they are going to need our help, there has got to be a way that maybe the town can step up, help our food bank, talk to the churches, talk to the organizations, let's see if we can get a fundraiser started soon, thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.